Tell me when we're on.
You are on.
All right, I would like to call to order the city council meeting of April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. Kirk will take the role.
Beckon. Johnson.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Plank.
Here.
Truster.
Here. Would there be a motion to excuse Councilman Beckon?
Yeah, although I talked to him today.
Yeah. I saw him today.
Maybe he's having some technical issues in getting on.
If he never shows up, I'll pick that up at the end.
Okay. All righty. The next item is approval of minutes of the regular council meeting in March eleventh, two thousand and twenty. Is there a motion?
I move we approve, oh, don't move that. I move we approve the regular minutes of the city council meeting of March eleventh, two thousand and twenty as sent.
I think it's the second, who was that?
Oh, Barry, I think, is the second.
Moved by Peterson, second by Johnson to approve the minutes, any discussion? And all in favor say yes.
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 That'll be a roll call.
Yeah, it's gotta be a roll call.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Monica, please.
Peterson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Per Plank.
Yes.
Truster.
Yes. Thank you, and I see that Councilman Beckon has joined us.
Present.
There you go.
We're all here. So the minutes of the March eleventh meeting are approved. Other mayor's comments, I just want to say a few things about where we stand these days. I think the residents of our community are responding very responsibly to this crisis. Our businesses and citizens are conscientiously complying with the shelter in place and stay-at-home orders. And as a result, at the moment, at least on the website that I've been tracking, there are only twenty-three confirmed cases in Aligon County and no recorded deaths. Now, that's not to say there aren't more people infected, but I think their R rate is low as a result of complying with the distancing orders. As we all know, a number of local eateries are providing carryout meals and some are delivering. And so for everybody, now's the time to show our support and help them at least keep some staff employed and be ready to open their doors again. Our staff in City Hall and DPW and the sheriff's deputies have done a great job in keeping city services available and our residents safe. And at the same time, they've adjusted their work schedules to minimize person-to-person contact. City Hall remains closed, but phone calls are forwarded to the staff. Essential DPW services have continued. And so far, luckily, we've only felt the need to close down one public place, the steps on Malt Baldi because of it was impossible to maintain adequate distancing on the steps, but we've kept the rest of our facilities open. Lieutenant Enstfield's report seems to indicate many fewer incidences that I've noticed than usual, but we'll await his report tonight, but I think that's important. Our city manager has been issuing regular reports on operations to keep residents informed. And while we had to postpone the March twenty-third meeting, we came up with this system, the Zoom, thanks to Kirk's diligence and getting us on the air so we can have virtual meetings from this point forward. As a resort community, we're particularly affected by some of the pieces of the executive orders. As you probably know, the governor added a ban on power boating just a few days ago, including the ability to launch boats. And so our boating community is essentially grounded for the moment, if you pardon the pun. The ban on short-term rentals for vacationers is also hurting our folks. So we, our fellow residents and our business community, have some difficult challenges, that's for sure, and uncertainties. But one thing is clear, we're all responsible for resolving this crisis by distancing ourselves and following the other provisions in the governor's executive order. So I think we've done well so far, and I look forward to continued success in the future. With that, city manager, do you have comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, you touched on a lot of the items that I was going to mention regarding city operations. The city facilities do, are, remain closed to the public currently, but all of our administrative staff is working remotely where possible and alternating times when they are in the office in order to maximize social distancing practices. While the citizens are still being transferred directly to the staff when they call City Hall during normal business hours, so we're really making a pretty strong effort to make sure that we still work with the public and get all their questions and concerns answered on a timely basis. The Public Works has also taken appropriate actions and measures to ensure the safety of their staff and still accomplish the critical work operations on a daily basis. The Public Works Department will be picking up brush and leaves on the normal schedule, which is this Tuesday and Wednesday, in order to keep the debris out of the city sewer system and keep that critical piece of infrastructure operating. We did lower the flags to half-staff today as directed by Michigan's governor as well. Our area experienced high winds today, which caused a storm surge, which increased water levels along Water Street. The Public Works closed off part of the road to vehicular traffic to help prevent some property damage. Edgewater Resources will be completing their downtown riverfront high-water report, identifying strategies for council to consider implementing in time for the next workshop meeting. So we're expecting to have that for council at that particular time. And as the mayor mentioned, Allen County Health Department announced that there's currently twenty-three positive COVID- nineteen cases in Allen County. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Are there any agenda changes to be proposed? All right, hearing none. We'll move forward to guest speakers. Lieutenant Brett Enstfield, are you on the line? I don't see you here.
I will unmute him. Okay.
Okay, hey, hey, how's it going, guys?
There you are.
Good, Brett.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, let me, I just kind of got a couple of things written down here, I was just gonna run down through. First of all, I don't know if you guys have noticed, Deputy Visser was deployed. She is in the Army National Guard as a nurse captain. She was given three days' notice and was deployed. She currently is in New Jersey when I talked to her last, a couple of days ago. But she has been replaced by Deputy Kling, who initially had showed interest in coming into the contract and actually works in this area. So he has been slid in her position until she gets back. She is approximately on orders for approximately six months. She was thinking that she probably is in the three-month range-ish, but she wasn't a hundred percent sure on that since her orders were literally given three days before she left. Next on the agenda there, we have been monitoring all the parks. I've been talking to Kirk probably pretty much daily with the different items that have been popping up and so forth. We are watching the Spear Street boat launch, the water situation along the roadways there. And then, you know, all the guys are hitting all the parks multiple times. And also in the nighttime, we have been doing in-depth business checks for the business areas. There's been some break-ins, you know, in surrounding counties and stuff for these businesses that are left empty. And, you know, so the items have been taken from, you know, outside the counties and stuff in the different news venues. The next thing on the list was the slow no-wake stuff, I had received that in the package. I had, was on the call on Thursday, but I had to get off, you know, the situation where Sergeant had called me and I had to deal with that. Obviously, those laws are very adept. I read through them, but you know, probably need to read through them like three or four times to even try to decipher all the items that are in it. I don't think there's a real golden nugget there to, you know, fix some of those issues that, you know, we have for the no wakes there. And lastly, looking ahead, the sheriff has decided to change our patrol structure. And the officers are gonna be patrolling roughly on a two-week, pretty continuous basis. So we have, you know, half our workforce working every day for pretty much two weeks. That'll give the other shift two weeks off so they can kind of, you know, maintain a workforce that isn't interacting with people, just in case we lose officers to get sick and stuff. So we have officers to come in as a relief, kind of off the bench. And then we can, you know, kind of better handle the situation until we know a little bit better. So it shouldn't seem any change in what our officers are doing there in town, but just kind of give you a heads up with this, kind of what we've changed our patrol structure, whether it may be fourteen more days in a row. So that's pretty much what I have, so, lot of stuff.
Any questions, or Brett, Chris?
This is more about, how long has she been there in New Jersey?
She had got there roughly, what day was that, Wednesday, or Thursday when I talked to her? So she had been there since Thursday, but she'd only been there for a day, and she had not, she, her group sets up the mobile hospitals, and they have not set up the mobile hospitals. She initially thought she was going to California, and that totally got changed like when she, when they left. She went to Chicago, spent a couple of days there, and then went to Ohio, spent a couple of days there, and then was shipped to New Jersey. So she wasn't a hundred percent sure where they were even gonna end up.
Will you thank her for her service?
Yeah, yeah, I will. I, yeah, when she called me, she said she was getting deployed, it was, you know, a hard phone call to, you know, take and stuff. So she does a really good job down there in the contract, so.
Yes, she does.
So Brett, I noticed on your report, there are a couple of items that are entitled health and safety. Are those related to the COVID-nineteen situation?
Yeah, some of those maybe labeled as general, our dispatch labels those, but, you know, it depends on what dispatcher is putting those in. The health and safety, or sometimes some of the general ones are. But, yeah, those are investigations that we did, are did down there for, you know, somebody maybe doing construction, or, you know, we've been getting a lot of anonymous calls in saying, you know, somebody's painting. And that doesn't mean that they're in violation or anything like that, this means that we were sent down to investigate those. We are keeping a track, a log, as the sheriff's office has complete, and tracking all those complaints, or doing a report on each one of those. And then any of those that, we've pretty much been going out and giving a, you know, warning, educating. And then if somebody subsequently, you know, does it a second time, then, you know, that's when we would probably seek prosecution on something like that, so.
Okay, Chris?
Compliance, compliance has been very high, so as you guys alluded to also, you know. So our complaints, I think when the sheriff landed complaints last week, it was like down like fifteen percent, which, when you think about that, we're not doing any proactive patrols really, you know, you know, making out traffic stops for like drunk drivers and so forth. You know, we, that number's, you know, made up with those type of complaints that we're receiving as the health and safety investigations that we're having to go out and do.
Oh, just for clarification, Brett, on the painting, is it just for outside, or are there complaints?
No, that's what we had, is, you know, they, you know, we had a complaint that somebody was painting, I was using as an example. It was, I don't know what the outcome was, I think it was, you know, the person that owned the building or something like that, that, you know, somebody had called in, or. So they, I think they thought a work crew was coming in and stuff. I mean, we've had some construction complaints and stuff around, when this initially started. You know, people, the education portion of it wasn't, you know, greatly, you know, in a press or anything like that. So I think everybody, over the last week or so, I think everybody knows what's going on now, and, you know, they're pretty complying with what the orders are, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good news, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's good, it's good to see, you know, so, and people are using it, you know, recreational areas and stuff, and, you know, for all and all of what we've seen, we've seen, you know, great, great respect for, you know, social distancing. And, you know, that really hasn't been any issues, you know, we've seen or been reported, so.
Very good. All right, thank you very much, Brett, appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem, guys.
Thank you, Brett.
Before we move forward, let me mention, now that I can see everybody at the same time, last week at the workshop, I hadn't figured out the technology enough. So, but please to get recognition, to get the floor, please like raise your hand and say, this is Chris, I'd like the floor, or I'd like to make a motion. If you'd identify yourself visually as well as telling me who the speaker is, I'd appreciate that. Next is public comment on agenda items only. Would anyone who's with us here care to make a comment? If you do, please signal as such by pressing the raise hand button, or if you're on the phone, you use it, let's see, if you're on the phone, I'm reading this now. It's star nine. All right, hearing no public comments, then we'll move on to requests for payment. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of ninety thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-seven hundred and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Moved by Johnson, second by Peterson, to pay the council payable, any discussion?
Yeah, this is Garn.
All right.
So on number twenty-three, the item MML compensation study, have we seen those results of that study?
No, we have not. The, the individual that's completed that was going to do a presentation to city council right before the pandemic hit. So we may have to do, it sounds like this is gonna probably go a little bit further than we anticipated, we might have to do a presentation.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Mark?
Yeah, yeah.
Where's my hand there, oh, there we go.
Yeah, okay, Mark.
A question for Kirk on item two, Aligon County Sheriff, the sheriff contract, twenty-five thousand plus. Is that, that can't be our normal monthly amount, because that comes up to well over three hundred and fifty thousand, I think. What, can you give us more insight as, or is my math bad?
I'm gonna unmute Mr. Stanislavski here.
Yeah.
No, that's the monthly bill, twenty-five thousand.
Oh, twenty, that's three hundred and fifty thousand a year?
Yeah, I think that's, hang on, can you pull it up, Kirk, or go up to the, let me see, is there other things on there? Or is that just, I think it's twenty-five thousand, so that's, yeah, it's like three thirties. Yeah, twenty-five thousand, seven twenty-five, that's the monthly bill that we've been paying since we've started with them.
I don't, and I didn't think it was that high, but I thought it was more like, or like two-twenty or two-fifty even, in that range. I think we need, unless I got amnesia, if possible.
No, that's what, that's, I had the same amount in there, and I get the monthly bill, so.
It makes sense to me, as I've watched it and negotiated on it, so.
Yeah, that's, that comes up to three oh eight, so three hundred and nine thousand.
Yeah.
If you multiply it out by twelve months, it's three hundred and nine thousand.
Well, I think our initial estimate on this, Mark, was that you were correct, it was something in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty thousand. But does this, does this added amount reflect that they've expanded coverage, or we have more reserve officers? Kirk, maybe you can respond to that.
Peter, I'm gonna have to have you chime in on that.
Well, that's been the same amount we've been paying for, it'll be two years, so I don't know, without pulling out the contract, I mean, that's been the same dollar amount, it was for a three-year contract. So that's.
I'm sorry, Pete, you wanna finish?
Yeah, that's what we've been paying since July of, what, eighteen?
Okay, Chris?
My, if I'm remembering, that was how much we saved. Wasn't it the two fifty?
Yeah, I think so.
Garn, did you want to speak?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
I'm good, I'm good, my memory was refreshed.
All righty.
What we can, what we can do, Mr. Mayor, is Peter can, we can bring up some, some financial information, put it down in a sheet, so it kind of identifies and give the, give the council kind of a little history of what we've been paying, so you can kind of get a good glimpse of it.
Okay.
Will this contract be coming, it'll be coming up again for the next fiscal year, or did we sign several years in advance?
I'd have to bring it up, I thought it was a three-year agreement.
In year three, we'll start in July, so a year from now, I guess we'd be under negotiations.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Holly.
Chris?
Holly. I had a quick question, there was, I think it was item twenty-three, I was just curious, it's a mayor's award for, from the Sagittuck Art Club?
Yes. Yes, each year we do a, it's a mayor's award for the, I'm just reading exactly, for the art club. Peter, you want to give a little bit of explanation on what that is?
It's a budgeted item that's been around, and I don't, it's a, the art club must put on some kind of presentation in June of every year, and the city, it's in the budget from the city council services for two hundred dollars for an award that the Sagittuck Douglas Art Club gives away every year.
Looks like Jane has a.
Jane?
In, at the waterfront film festival, the city gives the mayor's award for two hundred dollars, and the mayor is supposed to go out and pick out whoever receives that award. I did it back when I was mayor, but I know it's a two hundred dollar award that we give every year to the best of show. At that waterfront, waterfront festival, it's the Fourth of July one.
I was saying, I also, when I was mayor, I was the, giving that out, and it's just something that we've contributed to that for as long as I've been around, I think.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Monica, did we have a motion on this?
Yes, motion by Johnson, second by Peterson.
Thank you, I didn't write it down. Any other questions or comments on the council payable? Roll call vote, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Beckon?
Yes.
Leo?
She's muted.
My loss.
Okay.
Was that a yes, Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Per Plank?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes. The council payable is approved, our approval is approved. Next is introduction of ordinances, there are none, we have no public hearings, no unfinished business, and so we'll move to new business. And the first item is resolution number two hundred four one three dash A, Sagittuck Township Fire District's request to construct a dock for emergency services. Kirk?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the city of Sagittuck and Sagittuck Township Fire District recently entered into an intergovernmental agreement with respect to specifically identified land and bottom lands referenced in the agreement. Attached to this memo is a copy of the map included in the intergovernmental agreement that identifies the area. Section six of the agreement provides that before the Sagittuck Township Fire District may undertake any new construction, alteration, or major repair work within the premises or in the waters of the Kalamazoo River or Kalamazoo Lake, it must seek and obtain written approval of the city, of the city council. The city attorney has prepared the attached resolution for city council to use, if so desired, to grant permission for the new construction as required by the intergovernmental agreement. In the packet you have, the below image is expanded to kind of show the, what the proposal is. The city attorney prepared the attached resolution, and there is a sample motion here in the packet. This is a second version of the resolution. The Cal Lake Attorney contacted the city of Sagittuck's attorney today and wanted to have the Kalamazoo Lake Sewer and Water Authority added as an additional insured. So that was completed and resent out to council.
All right, is there a motion, Jane?
I'd like to move that we approve resolution number two zero zero four one three dash A version, I can't read the whole version, zero nine eight zero five dash zero four dash zero zero one zero five seven four three three, point three, regarding Sagittuck Township Fire District's request to construct a dock for emergency services.
Moved by, Per Plank, second by Peterson, to approve this resolution, discussion.
I think we've worked really hard on the, if I may be recognized.
Yes, please, you're.
Yeah, we gotta stay on top of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we've worked really long and hard on this, we've kicked it back and forth, we kicked it down the road, we brought it back in, and we even looked at the last minute request to change it, and I've thought about it, read about it, gone back in my notes, and I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with this.
Any other comments? Well, I would agree with Barry, we worked hard on this, and we looked for the best compromises we could possibly have. We didn't please everybody a hundred percent, but I thought we came to a point where we've tried to accommodate everybody's interests as best we can. So I think I'm kind of pleased with what the work everybody put in on this. Any other discussion, then?
This is Garn.
Yes, Garn.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I appreciate the additions that speak directly to the water main. I think it's item three A and then three D, so I appreciate that we're including that, so we recognize and will address any issues if they arise with the water main.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then this is a roll call vote, Monica?
Per Plank?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo? Leo?
We lose her.
Well, I think we lost her.
Yeah, she's not up there.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beckon?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes. All right, the resolution number two hundred four thirteen A is approved. The next item, and we'll try to get Holly back on before we vote on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Barry?
Point of order for the record, and help me with this, Monica, we had a vote, it wasn't an abstention, or I don't know what the protocol is, I'm sure she would have weighed in if she didn't get dropped by the internet. How are you gonna record that in the minutes?
That's a good question, I've never done a Zoom meeting before.
Yeah.
That's a good question, I'll have to ask my other fellow clerks how they're dealing with lost connections.
Yep, and so just make a note in your minute notes that her connection dropped, she was not able to vote on it, but in this case, fortunately, it passed unanimously.
Yeah, I think if the vote would have been, that could have been a deciding vote one way or another, we would have had to delay that and get her back on somehow.
Yeah, I would agree, Ken, is that, you know, if, if it is a close vote, everybody counts, and we would have to find some way, and Monica, maybe you can check into that, too. If it's a tie vote, and there's one, you know, the one guy or gal is left, do you suspend that vote, or you postpone it?
Yeah.
I will look into it with other fellow clerks that are also dealing with Zoom meetings.
I carry my Robert's tools everywhere, it's got nothing in here about Zoom meetings.
That is correct.
The, sorry, Mr. Mayor, the MML might have some good direction on that, given they've been doing quite a bit with remote meetings.
Yeah, good one, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, let me take up then resolution number two hundred four thirteen B, authorizing the sale of city personal property without competitive bidding. Is there a motion?
Make a motion?
Yes, Barry?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number two zero zero four one three dash B, authorizing sale of city personal property without competitive bidding as presented.
Second.
Second, moved by Johnson, second by Per Plank, discussion. Barry?
Yeah, you know, I wrestled with this all weekend, and, you know, in our workshop, both sides of that argument were very clearly stated, and, you know, and I heard it called a slippery slope, I heard it, you know. and I heard it called a slippery slope. I heard it, you know, both ways. And so I wrestled with that and then as I thought more and more about it, I thought, you know, this is an intergovernmental situation. This is not selling it to Joe down the street. And in this case, either parties are using taxpayer money. And when you've got a open bid, then the price conceivably go up. One of our members said that it's probably a buyer's market over there for that. And so in that, then you just make it, so we make an extra fifty bucks or maybe it's only a dollar in a competitive bid and then the fire district has to go out and spend six thousand dollars of our money. And that's money that the fire district spends is taxpayer money. So this seems to be, to me, a compromise to say, we'll be fairly compensated at the three thousand dollars that is in that resolution and the fire district doesn't get dinged having to spend more of my money and our money to go out and buy it because they missed it by a buck.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Barry?
I think one question, and I don't know if it was from Garnett or from Chris, asking if this has ever happened in the past, the sale of personal property without competitive bidding. And I recall that Cal Lake bought one of the former city dump trucks eight years ago and I think it was for, you know, it was for a negotiated price. Maybe Kirk might remember that. Oh, I think Bruce was still the DPW chair, but anyhow, that, so there was that precedent. By the way, that truck's still running, working. Cal Lake still uses it. Anyways, I just thought I'd add that to the discussion.
Jane?
Yes, and it happened at the fire department. I think it was in two thousand and sixteen, the fire department purchased a pickup truck from the city for six thousand, for a negotiated price. So this isn't anything new under the sun and I couldn't agree with Barry more. This is taxpayer money over and over and it's ridiculous to sell. I think it's ridiculous to sell this to an outside party and then pay, the taxpayer paid twice as much to buy another one. That just.
Chris?
Yeah, I'll just be ridiculous. I feel so, let it go.
So.
Any other, Garn?
Yeah, I, you know, I understand, but for me, what doesn't work is we've always done it this way. I'm very cognizant of the fact that if it's written in an ordinance somewhere that should a sale of one piece of city property to another city entity be allowed, I'd be happy to support it, but I don't know that we have anywhere in an ordinance that the first thing that we would do would be to enable another city operation to purchase property. So I just, I think we need to be very careful about setting a precedent, if you will. And if this is the way we've always done it, it's fine. I just would like it in writing so that I can support it. Otherwise, I can't support it. So.
I understand. But I'm hearing there was a, there is a precedent existing on this. And I agree with you, Garn, that it would be far better to have this written into an ordinance, but my feeling is that, you know, this is a governmental entity to governmental entity transaction that's, will save taxpayer money and certainly the benefits have gone in the opposite direction. The fire district has done a lot of things for Sagatuck that they haven't asked compensation for. So I'm inclined to help them out. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, say something. This is Kirk.
Oh, yes.
Um, the, that might be something we might want to consider in terms of an ordinance amendment. I've highlighted the actual copy of the ordinance language on your screen, excuse me, and we might want to adjust that and at some point in time here in the future, maybe put something about if the city is selling any excess property that we reach out to our governmental partners in some way, shape, or form, and if it's an intergovernmental transaction, then we go that route first. We can definitely identify that in the ordinance pretty easy and then at least kind of sets a, moving forward that anytime we dispose of something, if any of the governmental agencies can utilize it, they would have first option to purchase.
This is Garn. I could support that.
Okay.
This is Chris. Me too.
Jane?
And this has gone both ways. The city purchased a used mule from the fire department. It's been a few years ago, but, but other agencies have sold us things too without a competitive bid. Just for your information.
Barry?
Did you, you got me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is all great discussion. This is what's so fun about all this. But we do have something on the books that Kirk highlighted in there and to expand on that, per Garn's suggestion, I would agree with that. But there's a motion on the floor right now.
Indeed. Any other discussion? Then we'll have a vote. This is a motion to approve the resolution authorizing sale of city personal property without competitive bidding as presented.
Johnson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Leo? Not back yet?
Nope.
Becken?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Four to two.
So the resolution is approved. Again, Holly's absence wouldn't have made a difference in the outcome of the vote, so let's move forward. The, the next item is the Department of Public Works Services postponing the spring curbside junk pickup. Kirk?
The city of Sagatuck provides city residences, residents the service of curbside junk pickup, typically the first week of May each year. For two thousand twenty, this service is scheduled for May fourth through the seventh. During this time, the city DPW staff will pick up general household junk items such as couches, tables, chairs, desks, lamps, swing sets, bikes, carpeting, et cetera. Materials not accepted include lead acid batteries, tires, paint, yard waste, hazardous waste, and appliances. Due to the safety issues related to municipal personnel handling household items and the transmission of COVID nineteen, the city council discussed temporarily postponing the curbside junk pickup services scheduled for twenty twenty to a later date. I wanted to have this in front of council so that there would actually be some official action on it if you wanted to move this in this direction. And I crafted the motion, as you will see on your screen, that gives the ability for the city manager to establish another date. The things we want to be aware of, obviously, is we don't want to do junk pickup in the, in the, in the prime tourist season. That could be a pretty negative image for people coming to town. So we want to be, the public works director and myself are gonna have to kind of be creative on this and make sure we do it in either yet the spring sometime or in the fall so that we avoid the tourist season.
Chris?
I make a motion to approve postponing the city of Sagatuck's twenty twenty curbside junk pickup service and authorize and authorize the city manager to establish another date during twenty twenty that does not interfere with other critical city public works operations or impact the community negatively during the tourist season.
Second.
Moved by Peterson, second by Verplank to approve postponing the curbside junk pickup. Discussion. Barry?
Great idea and again, I just, when that happens, it's like a giant yard sale and I put it out at night. There's only half of it left in the morning because the pickers have been through. They've obviously touched everything and it may attract people to come into town, so I'm very much supportive of this.
Holly, I see you're back online. You can hear us okay? We need you unmuted.
There we go. Yeah, sorry about that. My internet's been down all day, so just bear with me.
Yeah, well, we're sorry that it happened and we're now on the last item of new business, the postponing the junk pickup. Any other discussion? Then we'll take a roll call, please. The motion is to approve postponing the pickup.
Peterson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes, so the motion is approved to postpone the pickup. We have no consent agenda, so we're open for public comments. Anybody of the public wishing to comment, please hit your either star nine if you're on the phone or your raise hand button if you're on video on Zoom. Anybody? Okay, hearing none. Under communication, the city of Sagatuck was recognized as a twenty nineteen Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation in honor of our commitment to effective urban forest management. And for those of you who have guarded our trees by being on the committee, we thank you. Chris?
I just want to say, as I do every year, that Nebraska was the birthplace of the Arbor Day.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is Kirk.
Yes.
I'd also like to thank our city clerk, Ms. Nagel. She prepares all this paperwork each year and submits it. There's a, the city has to document a lot of stuff and get it submitted in order to be recognized for this award. And also Mr. Herbert from the Public Works Department because they're involved in planting all the new trees. So those two are pretty instrumental in this award.
Right, yep. I would echo that. We have a great looking town. So there are no boards, commissions, and committee reports and so we'll move to council comments. Why don't you just walk through according to the way I have you on my screen. Chris?
I would just like to thank again all our first responders. I know this is just a tough time for everybody. I'd also like to thank the people that are still working in the stores, the essential stores, because they, they're doing a job that we all need to. So just thank you to everybody, including the Department of Public Works.
Right. Barry?
You know, I think we're all probably gonna echo this, but I'm gonna have to say it too. It's the frontline people that are keeping us alive and it's the, you know, for our little world, it's Kirk and Scott and Monica and our staff are keeping the city running. Our sheriff that has our people out there, you know, watching our community, highly professional people. One unsung hero are the Kalamazoo Lake Sewer and Water Authority. Water, potable water comes out when we open up our taps and there's a lot of pressure out there too on our Cal Lake guys, our fire district and our neighbors. I look around my neighborhood, Holly's across the street. I look around at, you know, Kate and Andrew and everybody's keeping their distance. Everybody's doing the right thing and I thank the community for that.
Right on. Jane?
Well, I echo the thanks to the first responders. I will say the calls have been remarkably down. There was a call the other night, in the middle of the night, that unfortunately, a gentleman was trying to pull his boat out of the water and his truck went into neutral and ended up in the water. So that was quite a long call. So if you wouldn't, if people wouldn't try to beat the system, it would be helpful. But like I say, the calls have been way down. I've noticed at the post office, people are very, very careful about going to the post office and they go in one at a time. It's great that the door is open so you don't have to touch it and it looks like people are really trying hard to get this done.
Mark?
I just echo, you know, what everybody said. Just a big thank you to those who are keeping us safe and a big thank you for our community and our visitors who are working hard with the social distancing because that's the only way we're gonna get over this. So a big thank you for all who are, you know, putting together a maximum effort.
Thanks. Holly? Holly? Garnett, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I've got two things. First, I wanted to, if people are not aware, Dr. Lori Burkholtz is offering the COVID ENI body test. She's set up a temporary office over by Mammo Pizza and it probably is less about where you're testing as it is to contributing to the body of knowledge and showing that we're actually doing what we're supposed to be doing over here with the physical distancing. So that's just a PSA for that. You can go on her website and learn about that. Second, I would like to see city council engage seriously in a discussion about the possibility of cutting taxes to support our local businesses as was shared with us that's being done in Zealand. Being in contact with many of the restaurant business owners in the last month, quite honestly, people are very scared. And, you know, several of our organizations are already cutting their budgets in half and we're having a Sadaaba meeting on Wednesday and are probably gonna do some really deep cuts to our budget and pretty much realistically accepting the fact that a good chunk of our summer is gone. So I'd like to see us seriously discuss the possibility of giving our folks a tax break.
Thanks. Okay, I see Holly appears to be, have dropped off again unless you're on in voice, Holly? I think not. All right, well, I think the only thing I can add is thanks to you guys for putting up with me and trying to run this meeting electronically. By the next time around, I'll have it figured out and hopefully by the time after that, we won't have to do this anymore. But anyway, thank you. I'm sorry to not be with you personally, but it's good to see you all. So with that, we're going to ask for adjournment. It would be a roll call vote.
No motion?
There should be a motion to adjourn.
I'll make, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting and generally, we can do this with unanimous consent in the real world, back at the shop. But tonight, I make a motion to adjourn.
And is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Johnson, second by Verplank to adjourn. Roll call vote, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Verplank?
Yes.
Peterson? Peterson?
I don't see her on anymore.
Lewis?
Yes.
Leo? Becken?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes. Boy, it's a good thing some of us stayed. We might not have been able to adjourn ever. Thank you all. Stay safe.
Okay, thank you.